If you're a member of the council, please come forward. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Warrentown Council. It is Tuesday, April 8th. I am Vice President Carrie Cronin. As you may all notice, our president Joseph D. Pasquale is not here this evening. And as many of you have heard, Joseph had a pretty serious accident a week ago tonight and is recovering at Rhode Island Hospital. Thank you to all who've reached out to him. He is strong, he is tough, he is stubborn. He is going to return in fighting shape, maybe a little worse for the wear. But thoughts, prayers, positive vibes are all welcome and needed for him. He has not lost his sense of humor. He's keeping the nurses all in stitches. And he hasn't lost his appetite either. Beware your fingers if you are feeding. But he said he would try to watch this evening's meeting. And he said he would text me if he had any comments or questions or advice. So if you see me on my phone, it's because the president is with us. If you would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The states of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We start the evening with public comment. Is anybody here? Does anybody here have a question, a comment, or anything to share? We can't take any action. If you do, please come forward. Great. Hearing none. We've got a lot of recognizing and proclaiming to do. Our first proclamation is the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. It takes place May 4 through May 10. And I will read this proclamation. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas the professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. The professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. The professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, we, the Warrentown Council, do recognize the week of May 4 through May 10, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation of our professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. We thank them and acknowledge them. Next, we have the resolution from the Town Council in recognition of Earth Day. Whereas the Council of the Town of Warren recognizes that the first Earth Day in 1970 was the beginning of the modern environmental movement, which emphasizes the value of a cleaner environment. Earth Day has become a worldwide event and has highlighted some of our most critical environmental issues. Rhode Island citizens in general, and Warren residents in particular, have demonstrated commitment to environmental conservation and have encouraged environmental action from leaders to protect our bountiful natural assets. It is our common responsibility to clean our environment and protect it from degradation. In 2025, Earth Day is on April 22nd, and in Warren, the Earth Day celebration cleanup activities will take place on April 26th. Resolve that the Council of the Town of Warren supports this 33rd year of Warren Conservation Commission's Earth Day celebration activities in Warren and other activities on statewide, national, and global level. And be further resolved that we encourage Warren residents to participate in neighborhood cleanups, educational activities, and celebrations connected with Warren's Earth Day celebration. And I might add that these proclamations and resolutions are all signed by our President Joseph D. Pasquale and supported by myself, Carrie Cronin, John Hanley, Louis Rego, and Derek Trombley, our council members. Yay for Earth Day. One more. This is the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. This holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas Warren has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now therefore, Joseph D. Pasquale, Town Council President of the Town of Warren, hereby proclaims April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the Town of Warren, and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I'm sure President D. Pasquale is in favor of that. So now, next we have a recognition of Ed Theberge. And Councilman Rego will meet Mr. Theberge at the podium and present this acknowledgement. There's a, I believe it's that single one there?
Ed, please, over here. I met Ed for the first time 56 years ago when I was seven years old. Little did I know I would serve with him in so many capacities. And today, we want to recognize him because Ed, after I think 60 or 70 years of living in Warren, is going to be moving to Pennsylvania. The Town of Warren, Rhode Island recognizes, presents to Edward J. Theberge, former Warrentown Councillor, founding member of the Warren Voluntary Historic District Committee, member of the Warren Historic Amory Board of Directors, former trustee George Hill Library, instrumental in restoration of the Federal Blues' carriage barn and the Maxwell House. For his dedication and lifetime commitment to the public good, due gratitude from the Warrentown Council presented this eighth day of April 2025 from President Joseph D. Pasquale, Vice President Carrie Cronin, John Hanley, Derek Trombley, and Louis Rego. And I've never worked with someone so compassionate in getting things done like Ed Theberge. Now, one of the things that was missed here was we've all recognized when we've seen the fire hydrants, when they did the Patriots and the fire hydrants. Actually, it was Ed's wife and Ed was the ones that were responsible for that many years ago. I do have a good memory. Thank you so much, Ed.
You're entirely welcome.
Okay, next, we will be honoring some athletes in our community. If the members of the Mount Hope High School Boys Basketball Team could all come up, those who are here, and if their coaches and the athletic director, if she is here, could join, that would be wonderful. Hi, Michael. Carrie Cronin. Nice to have you all here. All right. So tonight, we're honoring the Boys Basketball Team Division III State Champions. Yay, team. So because I am shamefully not in the loop about your accomplishments, I'm going to read the certificate of recognition here and then hope that the coach can maybe say a few words about what you guys have done and how much it means to all of us. So here we have a certificate of recognition. I'm going to read this first one and then the names, and hopefully those of you who are here can take them. And then you can give them out to your teammates. So whereas the members of the Warrentown Council realize that participation in organized athletics helps to build character and teaches a wholesome sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth. And whereas to really excel in any sport, a young person must demonstrate, in addition to a great deal of natural ability, an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. And whereas special commendation is due to all team members, to coaches, staff, and to team sponsors who have given generously of financial and moral support. And whereas this has been an exciting, hard fought, and successful 2025 season, and we are proud of the record you have earned and the fine publicity you have brought to our community by your inspired team play. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Warrentown Council, join with the family and friends of the state basketball champions in extending the congratulations of all citizens of the Town of Warren on their extraordinary accomplishments and outstanding basketball season. Approved this eighth day of April 2025 and signed by Joseph D. Pasquale, President, and stood in support, myself, Carrie Cronin, Vice President, John Hanley, Lou Rego, and Derek Trombley, Councilmen. This one is for Brian Abruzzi. Is he here? Okay, so I'm going to just put this here and I'm going to continue to read the names. And step up. This one is for John Adams. No. Okay, this one is for Lucas Andriosi. Lucas, here you go. Congratulations. Much. Timothy Castriota? No. All right. Jackson Chichinelli? Did I say that? Whatever. I'm sorry. Reese Davies? Guys are busy probably playing on other teams, right? Aiden Gagnar? Carson Jerome? Michael Caselka? Matthew McDougall? Ian McGuire? It's a big team. Okay, but we do want to recognize them all by name. Corey Ortelt? Jaden Owens? Brennan Perry? Benjamin Peters? Malak Rodrik? Ethan Santar? Gianfranco Samaro Blanca? Jacob Tamke? John Thompson? Paul Vicioni? I got them all? Okay. Jeffrey Griffka? And Tim Thor? And Michael Delmitch? Is one more? Okay. And Matthew Cardemos. Cardemos? Okay. Do I have any more? And Christina is not here either, Keddie, the athletic director. And I think, okay, so these are those, I'm going to ask you to hand these all back to me. They have a little correction to do on a few of them. We'll take care of that. They will be returned in perfect working order. Did you want to say just a word, please? This is a great accomplishment.
I want to thank the council for honoring us. And it's quite, you know, we haven't been here, haven't been invited. So I think it's great that you guys have a chance to acknowledge, you know, a lot of the players and stuff. Unfortunately, a lot of our team members, they have other things going on right now with baseball and other things as far as sports and stuff. It's not like they're just doing one sport. So it's great to see them, opportunity to do other sports as well. We do have Tom Fulen here. He's like my right hand man. He does all my He's, does all my stats for me and everything. Timmy Thorpe is a JV coach, they were fortunate to win the JV championships as well this year. And Mike Delmage, what a, pretty much my right-hand man in the varsity side as well. Matt Karadimos couldn't make it today, I think he had practice tonight as well. But not for nothing, we do have a team of about twenty kids, opportunity to win the state champion this year. Just to give you guys a little bit of background, our record in the league was about ten and one, we're fourteen and four with interleague play, it's kind of a different setting this year, we play against all teams against D1, D2, and D3. So it was kind of a different scenario, so we had opportunities to play a lot of teams, not even just in our division. We were seventeen and five overall, we were fortunate to have a couple of standouts, Lucas Andriozzi, he ended up getting second-team All-League, so round of applause for that. He also made first-team All-Division, okay, for D3, which is awesome, okay? We had Jack Thompson, Matt McDougall ended up making second-team All-Division, and Jack Thompson is here. And then one of our players that isn't here today, Malik Rodrick, ended up making first-team All-Division and then third-team All-Selection for All-League, so which is great, so. We've been fortunate enough over the course of the last six, seven years, I don't, I don't count COVID because COVID was like a non-year, but we've been fortunate to have three championships over the years, and a lot of it has to do with the efforts from all these players and the coaches, it's, it's a lot of time and effort. I do appreciate all of them, I appreciate the kids coming in every day and letting me kind of work them for six days a week because it's a testament for like four months of their time and effort, so I want to give them a round of applause and thank you very much. Yeah, thanks.
Let's do it again next to you, guys.
Yeah. Okay, next, if we could have the swimmers and coaches who are part of the Mount Hope High School Boys Varsity Division III State Champions come right up. And I should have placed the other guys a little bit more here so you actually show on camera because there are millions of people watching right now live via YouTube, just come over a little bit more. Okay, so I'm going to go through and, and read this to you guys and read through all the names. So whereas the members of the Warren Town Council realize that participation in organized athletics helps to build character and teaches a wholesome sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth, and whereas to really excel in anyone's sport, a young person must demonstrate in addition to a great deal of natural ability, an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and whereas special commendation is due to all team members, to coaches and staff and to team sponsors who have given generously of financial and moral support, and whereas this has been an exciting, hard-fought, and successful 2025 season, we are proud of the record you have earned and the fine publicity of you, you have brought to our community by your inspired team play. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Warren Town Council, join with the family, friends of the state swimming champions in addition, in extending the congratulations of all citizens of the Town of Warren on their extraordinary accomplishment and outstanding swimming season. And we've got a little typo here, so we're going to, I'm going to read your names and I'm going to hand these to you and then you're going to give them right back. So Nicholas Chops, all right, Benjamin Coles? Samuel Coles? It's a big team. John Dion? Cohen Ferreira? Congratulations. Am I saying Liam Gagnier? Gagni? Gagnar? Congratulations. Jackson Howland? McNamara Marston? No. Thin Panza? That's you. All right, Kiran Riedel? Max Silva? Head Coach Casey Carr? And Adam Dutra, Assistant Coach? And again, the athletic trainer, Christina Ketti. So I noticed there are swimmers who are grades ten and eleven, so you're going to have a strong team for years to come, I'm sure. And for those of you who are continuing on to college, good luck to you. And I'm just going to take these back and we'll get these back to you once they have the little thing, so again, an applause. Want to say something for your team? A few words? Hey, guys, swim practices, oh, I used to do it, my kid used to do it, it's a lot, so to be commended, thank you. Yes, do.
I, I just thought it was a great season. Last year, we lost by ten points, so we were pretty close, and then this year, we really stepped it up and won, so.
Okay. All right, and finally, we have the Kikmuu of Middle School Wrestling Individual State Champions. Do we have any wrestlers here? Okay, so we have certification of recognition, I'm not going to read it again because it says the same thing and they are wrestlers. We have Cameron Ferreira, he is a middle school state champion at seventy pounds. And we have Matthew Williams, a middle, middle school state champion at one hundred and nineteen pounds. And we have William Corente, middle school state champion, heavyweight. I'm sure if Council President D. Pasquale was here, he would say something really inspiring and with experience because he was a wrestler, so many congratulations to our wrestlers and their accomplishments and to all of our athletes. Thank you. Alrighty, so now we are moving on to the swearing-in of some officers. And if we could have, come forward, Lieutenant Peralta is going to say a few words about each officer, Chief Borges will join us. Yes, come right behind, please. So we will start with Mark Ferreira. You want to say something? Yes?
All right, thank you. On behalf of Chief Borges and the Warren Police Department, I'd like to welcome everyone, families and friends, the town council and residents of Warren. Thank you for your support and without the support, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. Tonight's ceremony, we have four officers, so I'm going to read a brief bio for each officer and then they're going to have someone that they chose to come up and do the pinning. So the first one we're going to start with is Lieutenant Ferreira, to my left. Lieutenant Ferreira was raised in Warren, Rhode Island as a graduate of Mount Hope High School. Following graduation, he enlisted in the United States Army, where he honorably served for eight years, completing three overseas deployments and retiring at the rank of Sergeant. Lieutenant Ferreira joined the Warren Police Department in 2002. He served as a patrol officer from 2002 to 2018 before being promoted to the rank of Sergeant. 2018 to 2025, he served as the department's midnight shift supervisor, a shift that frequently includes newly hired officers. In this role, Lieutenant Ferreira played to keep hot in mentoring and training the department's newest members and helping to shape the next generation of officers. Throughout his career, Lieutenant Ferreira has taken on numerous roles and responsibilities within the department. He has served as a field training coordinator, honor guard liaison, rifle team member, active shooter instructor, and officer highway safety coordinator for the department. Lieutenant Ferreira now assumes command of the Patrol Division as a nighttime lieutenant. He is a dedicated and valuable member of the Warren Police Department, and we wish him continued success in his new leadership role.
All right, if you will raise your right hand, and Mark Ferreira, you are hereby notified that you have been appointed to the Office of Lieutenant. I'm not going to do the oath of office, repeat after me. You, Mark Ferreira, do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto this state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States. Is he to repeat this? No. Okay, I'm saying this, sorry.
Get in there. I do that. Can't respond.
You will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Town of Warren and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Lieutenant for the ensuing term or until another be engaged in your place or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God. I hereby certify that the aforementioned oath was taken before me by the aforementioned Mark Ferreira on this eighth day of April, AD 2025, in the Town of Warren, County of Bristol, and State of Rhode Island. I swear. Thank you.
Next will be Sergeant Aries Maderas Jr. Sergeant Aries Maderas Jr. is a dedicated law enforcement officer with a distinguished career in public service. A graduate of Mount Hope High School in 2002, Sergeant Maderas went on to attend Roger Williams University, where he pursued a degree in criminal justice. In 2005, Sergeant Maderas began his career with the Coventry Police Department after graduating from the Rhode Island Municipal Police Academy. Over the course of his sixteen years with Coventry Police Department, he received numerous accolades, including being named the State of Rhode Island Community Police Officer of the Year in 2018. In December of 2021, Sergeant Maderas transferred to the Warren Police Department, where he continues to serve with distinction. He is deeply committed to professional development and training, maintaining his Rhode Island Police Officer standards and training, round post-certification as an instructor for the Police Academy. Within this department, Sergeant Maderas holds key roles as a use-of-force CPR and TASER instructor. He also serves as a field training officer and is an active member of the department's motorcycle unit. One of the accomplishments Sergeant Maderas is most proud of is his membership in the Rhode Island Law Enforcement Assistant Service Team, which is a group of public safety professionals dedicated to providing support to departments and families in the tragic event of a public safety officer's loss. Sergeant Maderas remains passionate about community service, training, and supporting his colleagues, exemplifying the core values of integrity, professionalism, and compassion throughout his career.
Aries Maderos, you are hereby notified that you have been appointed to the Office of Sergeant. You are Aries Maderos, do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto this state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States, that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Town of Warren and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sergeant for ensuing term or until another be engaged in your place or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God. I hereby certify that the aforementioned oath was taken before me by the aforementioned Aries Maderos on this eighth day of April, AD 2025, in the Town of Warren, County of Bristol, and State of Rhode Island.
Thank you. I swear.
Next, we have Detective Austin Carrero. Detective Austin Carrero is a 2012 graduate of Mount Hope High School, before then attending, before then attending Roger Williams University to further his education. In 2016, he graduated from Roger Williams with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, with a minor in psychology. In 2018, Detective Carrero joined the Warren Police Department and attended the Rhode Island Municipal Police Academy. Six years later, in December of 2024, Detective Carrero was promoted to detective, where he now conducts crime scene investigations, assists with the development of cases and the prosecution of those cases, as well as following up with victims and witnesses. We wish him luck in his new position.
Your right hand. You are hereby, Austin Carrera, you are hereby notified that you have been appointed to the Office of Detective. The oath of office, you, Austin Carrera, do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto this state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States, that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Town of Warren and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Detective for the ensuing term or until another be engaged in your place or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God. I hereby certify that the aforementioned oath was taken before me by the aforementioned Austin Carrera on this eighth day of April, AD 2025, in the Town of Warren, the County of Bristol, and the State of Rhode Island.
Thank you.
Next, we have Patrolman Foley, who's graduated from Merrick College, 2014, with a bachelor's degree in psychology. Patrolman Sean Foley was hired by the Warren Police Department and attended the Rhode Island Municipal Police Academy in January of 2024. Upon his successful graduation from the academy, he then completed a rigorous field training program in August of that same year and is currently assigned to the eleven-to-seven overnight shift. We extend our best wishes to Patrolman Foley as he embarks on what we hope will be a successful and meaningful career with the Warren Police Department.
Sean Foley, you are hereby notified that you have been appointed to the Office of Patrolman. You, Sean Foley, do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto this state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States, that you will, will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Town of Warren and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Patrolman for the ensuing term or until another be engaged in your place or until you be legally discharged therefore, so help you God. I hereby certify that the aforementioned oath was talked, was taken by me, before me, by the aforementioned Sean Foley on this eighth day of April, AD 2025, in the Town of Warren, the County of Bristol, and State of Rhode Island. in the town of Warren, the county of Bristol, and state of Rhode Island.
Last but not least, Patrolwoman Schoenfeld was hired by the Warren Police Department and attended the Rhode Island Municipal Police Academy in August of 2024. Prior to this, Officer Schoenfeld attended Roger Williams University, where she obtained a bachelor's degree from the university in psychology and minored in criminal justice and public health. During her time attending Roger Williams University, Officer Schoenfeld also worked as an intern for the Warren Police Department, working in the detective division. In December of 2024, Officer Schoenfeld graduated from the Police Academy and went on to complete her field training program. Officer Schoenfeld is currently also assigned to the 11:07 overnight shift. We wish Officer Schoenfeld a memorable and successful career with the Warren Police Department.
Ally Schoenfeld, you are hereby notified that you have been appointed to the office of probationary patrol woman. The oath of office. You, Ally Schoenfeld, do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto this state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States. That you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the town of Warren and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary patrol woman for the ensuing term or until another engage in your place or until you be legally discharged therefrom. So help you God. I hereby certify that the aforementioned oath was taken by me, the aforementioned named Ally Schoenfeld, on this eighth day of April, A.D. 2025, in the town of Warren, county of Bristol, and state of Rhode Island. Thank you so much. Alrighty. Are we all? Thank you so much. And congratulations.
Gladly save a quick one.
Okay. Come on down. It's picture time.
Hey, Mark. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Always good to get in tight, police officer.
Hey, congratulations.
Yeah.
When I play golf with Louis, need cheats who do I call?
Yeah.
Congratulations. For anyone that's, uh... Everyone's welcome to join for your reception. Immediately. Getting inspiration.
Thank you.
Did you have anything on me, gentlemen?
I don't know.
Okay. Enjoy your time.
I don't know where it is yet. I've been here fourteen years. What the hell?
All right, are we ready to get back to the business of the town?
Madam President, could I ask that the doors be closed?
Yes, you could ask that the doors be closed. Alrighty, so, uh... The rest is gonna seem rather anticlimactic, but we're moving on. We have a resolution here. This is a resolution on the removal of abandoned energy poles. So, to the Honorable Rhode Island General Assembly, requesting full funding. Oh, nope, that's not this. I don't have the, uh...
I didn't have, I don't have the other ones.
I also do not have the one.
I'd like to have that.
Oh.
I think the microphone might be off.
I beg your pardon. May that be moved to the May calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And next, we have the Resolution Regarding Funding for Private School Transportation. At the, uh, the late hour, we received some communication from the chairperson of the Regional School Committee that gave me enough pause to request that the, this resolution be moved to the next, or a new, possibly a new resolution be moved to the next council meeting. I think we should all take some time to read the information that was shared to us, as this resolution, as written, may not achieve the intended goal of reducing the cost of transportation for us. And we want to be sure that we get the language correct and that we are doing good work and not causing ourselves further cost.
Would you like to go to the May meeting?
Yes, please.
Make a motion, we continue this to the May meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, next, we have appointments. Um, if our building official, Matt Cabral, could come up and just give an explanation of why we will likely be appointing the two alternates.
Good evening, Matt Cabral, Building and Zoning Official for the town of Warren. Um, so, we have, um, our full-time, well, it's part-time, but our appointed electrical inspector, which is Mr. Massid, Nick Massid. He also owns a company in town and does a lot of work in town, so... So we don't have any conflict of interest. Um, we have backups, and the problem with the backups are that they also own companies. So, um, that's why we, we have Mr. Bud Souza. Um, and then we have, tonight, if you can, wishing to appoint Wayne Jablinski, who is actually the, the electrical inspector for Bristol. And then Ryan Souza, who is also a inspector and master electrician. So this would give us the ability, so that way, with vacations or any other conflicts of interest, we can keep projects moving forward and have the inspections conducted.
Any questions?
Just a clarification, we don't have to choose between these two gentlemen. Both are going to be alternate inspectors.
Yes, if you, my, my wish would that we, tonight, appoint both, uh, which would give us a option. Uh, and ironically, we already have two inspectors going on vacation, so I kinda need, I need the alternates.
Thank you for the clarification.
Make a motion, we'll appoint Ryan Souza and Wayne Jablinski.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty. There are no applicants for, uh, the, uh, same host of, um, open, uh, positions on various boards and commissions. We continue to, uh, be in search of an associate municipal court judge, a juvenile hearing board member, there's one alternate position, a rec board, there's one, uh, position available, the 250th commission, there are four positions available, and the Board of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Directors, there are two positions available. Um, these are important and vital, uh, boards and commissions and, uh, a judge. So I hope that somebody out there hears, and if anybody out there knows anybody, please do direct them to apply.
Vice President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to re-advertise the vacant positions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have conversation?
Yeah, let's have some conversation. Should we be soliciting instead of advertising? I mean, how many times would we advertise? Do we be going out and looking for these people?
I think he can do both.
Yeah. I'm just looking at the expensive advertising.
Well, I don't think we have, we don't have to throw it in the paper. We mostly advertise it on our website.
In Form 1, maybe? It just, it just seems like, I think it gets to a certain point that we, as council people, or maybe turn, uh, Anthony as an intern, maybe solicit me to.
I'd be comfortable just putting it on our website and any other social media that we could get, rather than... Because it doesn't, yeah, putting it in the paper goes, it gets expensive. Does it, well, is it?
I have no problem with that. I just have a question for the solicitor, is that, are we legally obligated to advertise these in the paper?
You, you have in the past. And it hasn't been successful. Now it's continuing on. I think if, if you take that two-track approach of, um, using social media and other, uh, town's website, perhaps in conjunction with, you know, trying to get some people up there is the best thing to do.
There won't be any legal issues with that. Excellent. Well, I'm all for that, then.
So, so it's okay with that. I withdraw my motion. It's just that we're given the direction, don't go spending money advertising. Is that fair, Tony? Yes, it is fair and it's well. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, next, we have acceptance of minutes. Um, there are four sets of minutes here to be approved. I know that the clerk has, has some amendments to them. Uh, Ms. Veroni, do you want to, uh, do you have corrections for the March 11th minutes?
I have none for the 11th.
Does anybody on the council have any, uh, edits, or do we have a motion to accept?
Motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And how about the March 11th executive session meeting minutes?
They're gonna have to be continued.
Those, do we have a motion to continue those?
Second motion.
Second?
Second.
And favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, the March 19th, the first budget meeting minutes?
Just one clerical, I just, um, repeated a sentence twice.
Okay, so, uh, with that amendment, do we have, uh, a motion?
Motion, we approve the, uh, March 19th first budget meeting as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, the March 26th?
Just have to replace, um, uh, motion pass.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the March 26th second budget meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Um, does anybody have any reason to pull anything for, from consent? And with that, do we have a motion to pass the consent agenda, P. 1 through P. 4?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have P. 5. This is a request for a mobile food establishment permit from Allison's Wonderland. Is Allison Kamara here? Please come forward. Hi there. Oh, thank you. Okay, so if you could come to the, uh, podium. And Allison, uh, Allison's Wonderland, what do you serve on your food truck?
Um, so I serve a mixture of Portuguese, Spanish, and Italian food. Um, so I do my most famous empanadas and nachos. Those are like my two biggies and my chili cheese dogs as well.
All right, any questions from the council?
Not at all.
And with, uh, the, uh, registration here, um, all of the other legal requirements are in order?
Make a motion, we approve the mobile, the mobile food license for Allison's Wonderland.
Second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's so simple, thank you for...
Thank you.
For being here. Alrighty, we have correspondence. We have, um... Nineteen, uh, pieces of correspondence. Does anybody have anything that they would like to pull for discussion? Alrighty, um... Mr. Solicitor, we had discussed the potential of pulling something for discussion. Would you like to speak on that?
That's correct. Uh, that is, uh, on your agenda as C. 18 and C. 19. Uh, those should be read together. Uh, it is a public notice from the Coastal Resources Management Council and a letter from the, uh, U.S. Army Corps of Engineer regarding, um, the application that was submitted for the Narragansett Electric Company. Uh, that is for a project that borders, I believe, the Palmer River. Uh, if this is the public comment period, the town of Warren does not have jurisdiction on the project. Uh, these two agencies, CRMC and the Army Corps of Engineers do. Whenever they, um... Rule on matters of these nature, uh, what they do is they have a public comment period. Uh, the purpose of the notice that was sent to the town is twofold. Number one, to let the public know that they can, uh, any, uh, citizen can, uh, give their comment, but the town can too. You have a thirty-day period to do so. Uh, once that period closes, uh, uh, I, both of the agencies will not take any further public comment, and then they'll proceed in their own regulatory review.
And what are the dates of the public comment being opened?
Right. The, uh, public comment for, um, CRMC is open until the 26th. And for the Army Corps of Engineers, it should be the same. New voice, April 9th.
Well, the clock is ticking on that one. You have till tomorrow to comment to the Army Corps of Engineers.
I had a question. My question was gonna be, obviously, my first thing would have been, I would want the planner to look at this, but we don't have a planner. Uh, would you think it would be appropriate to re, I don't know if we have time, refer it to, would it be the Harbor Commission for it to look at?
No, it would be Conservation. Winning Conservation, they would... No, it would be Conservation. When in Conservation, they would go more in.
It, it, it would be appropriate, uh, when you accept the uh, communication to refer them to your Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Because it runs along a lot of land.
Correct, yes.
So, do we have a motion to accept and uh, refer?
I'd make a motion, we accept and refer it to the Conservation Commission.
Both C18 and C19.
Correct.
Alrighty. Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now you have further question, discussion?
Did you know, like, when, when we had that thing about removing the poles, I thought that this was part of the poles. Removing the poles is a different.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and this one, basically what they're doing is they're replacing wood poles with the metal ones.
Yeah.
So. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, we have old business. I believe we are um, the Councilman Rego was pulling the uh,
Yeah.
Also, yeah, I wanna withdraw that.
Alrighty. Um, next, we have new business, MB1, Discussion and Action Regarding the Petition for a Zone Change Amendment at 51 Cole Street to be referred to the Planning Board for Review. And who do we have before us?
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair and members of the council, Michael Monte of Sayrean and there, on behalf of Whip LLC. Uh, so this is very simply a procedural mechanism tonight. 51 Cole Street, which is actually probably less than a tenth of a mile west of here, uh, is located presently in the Manufacturing District. And we've, are, are making this petition to have it be rezoned as village business for allow permit, to allow for mixed use. Um, we actually have already been before the Planning Board, and your most recent iteration of your Comprehensive Land Use Plan that actually states that 51 Cole Street should be zoned, mixed use. So the time is now ripe to, to formalize this so that residents can move into the residential component of the property and also uh, small businesses. The Manufacturing uh, District is very restrictive zoning in the town. Uh, so a request that the matter be referred to the Planning Board so that they can make a determination as to whether it is in fact consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which I imagine they'll do. Uh, and then we'll be back before you uh, in a couple of months for a public hearing.
Great. Any questions from the council?
I see that it, it abuts a village business, so we're not, we're gonna run afoul and create a spot zone, so.
Right.
Correct. The proposal is to extend the NB line rather than creating so.
I'll make a motion, we refer to the Planning Board for a uh, for a review and uh, a recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will you also uh, um, schedule the matter for a public hearing, which is what, what is required here, and it'd be some notice that the applicant will take care of.
Would there be enough time to get it to planning and have it back here in May for the public hearing?
I'm thinking more proven if it was June, I'm looking over to the town clerk. So I think it's proven to set this one down for the uh, June Town Council Meeting.
Okay, do we need to make a motion for that, or it, she can just put it on the agenda, correct?
I, I, I prefer it if you did a motion, that way that, that you don't think the uh, uh, the um, notice and the advertising can be set, and the costs can be forwarded for that over to the applicants, the app. Okay.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we uh, put this on for the, the consideration for the June agenda.
For public hearing.
For the public hearing, for the June agenda.
Second.
Wouldn't that would be with proper notice?
With proper notice.
And a second.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And costs to be borne personally by the attorney.
Oh, God. I don't, I'm not in support of that.
There's so many of them in here.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. MB2, Discussion and Action Regarding the Budget Process. This is Councilman Rego. I think he would like some clarification and some additional um, support documentation in the future. Do you wanna speak on this?
So I think we did a great job, and Brian did a great job for the first time, but I think that the profit would have been a lot better if we had.
Your mic's not on.
Yeah, I, I think Brian did a great job, but I think all um, uh, budgets, the process, it should contain certain things in the, in the budget. Uh, that will be helpful to the manager, the treasurer, and the council people. I think that we should have, in every, all budgets, um, process, we should have three years of budgets uh, that have the actual and the budgeted amount for three years prior. I think we should have a current year and a date, uh, uh, current year uh, of budgeted and year-to-date actuals and estimates of where we're gonna be. So if you're eight months into the year, uh, come up with some sort of formula so we know how we come up with the outcome. And a little explanation of, you know, how you came up with that. And if there's a 5% variance, it would be good to know. Again, it doesn't have to be a big explanation, but just something. So if you have somebody that comes to you in, in, to the, through this process, it just gives an explanation of how we get to point A to point B. That's all it is. It's just to simplify things. And I think that uh, when we start the process, I think having a cash balance sheet with an explanation of where, where we're actually at. Um, you know, you, you, we can have all these numbers and they're great, but you know, you know, let's say we, we're, we're saying we got 5 million. Well, yeah, we got 5 million, but we gotta pay for the schools, we got X of things. What do we actually have? And just an explanation. It's not a perfect science, but I think it should be part of the budget process. And again, a lot of these people here, including myself, other than Derek, um, we've done this for a long time and, and things get missed. I mean, this year, we had the pilot program for the Water Authority. We plugged in $51,000. Well, if we would have had something that would have showed, it wasn't there the prior year. And then we ran into the sewer, uh, sewer uh, operations, where we had 550. But then afterwards, we got the, the paper showing that prior year, we had, we, it was actually $781,000. So those are things that were missed. I'm not blaming anyone, but I think that this would make it, it, a better process for everyone to work with. So the question is, if anybody has any questions on this. My question is, and I think this should be part of the charter, but we're not gonna be changing the charter now. My question is, should this be by policy or by ordinance?
Aye. Paul, I was gonna give my opinion, but let's get the legal opinion first.
I, I, to me, this is appropriate to put in an ordinance. Ultimately, when you have your charter, next charter review, you're probably gonna wanna take a look at uh, these type of, of budget control provisions. But in the meantime, I, I think that uh, if, if you wanna uh, give this some full force, it would have to be an ordinance as opposed to a policy.
Yeah, and I agree. And again, it's, it's, it's not so much for rest of it here, but it's more for the next uh, uh, council people that may be all new and, and not have any idea, or the next town manager, or the next treasurer. I just, I just think it makes it a better process.
I was gonna say, policy. I could go with an ordinance. I would not wanna put something like this in the charter, because if we wanna make tweaks, it is so hard to make tweaks to the charter.
It's a good point.
I wouldn't wanna lock this in stone, say we wanted to go to 3% or 2%. Now we're gonna have a special election.
And again, I could go into 5%, it was just a number.
No, what I'm saying is, say if 5% doesn't work, and we wanna go to 7, or we wanna go to 3, if we put it in the charter, we have to have a special election to change it. I would lean more towards an ordinance, or actually a policy. But you know, if it's, if the count, the rest, the majority wants to go ordinance, I'd agree with that. But I'd go more towards policy. I, I think we can change it at will, if it's just a policy.
I would rather see it as an ordinance to make sure it gets done. And it doesn't get overlooked.
Yes.
Um, I have to say, I agree with my fellow councilman, Mr. Rego, on this proposal. Um, I think that it's, uh, having been in the pub, in the public, watching the council make the budget, and then also now being, this is my first budget session, being in that position, some of the same questions get repeated a lot, like, why is this going up? Why is this this way? Why is this that? And I think adding some programmatic elements, which is what I think this is intending to do, would be very helpful for the coun, for this council and also for future councils. But I do have a quick question for the manager and finance director of whether they feel that this additional, um, uh, if this is feasible to produce in the timeline of the budget. Um, Spurging says, yes, it is. How's the manager feel?
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I, 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 I think it's feasible. I mean, it does, it's, it's guidelines, you know, it's, it's a map to show you what to do. Um, maybe you start a little earlier, you know, it, but I, I, I don't see this to being too burdensome.
A heavy lift, okay. But that was my major concern with this, is how much of a burden administrative element there is to it. So that's gratifying to hear. Um, I, as far as the debate between ordinance or policy, I don't have a preference for it. Um, I'll defer to the rest of the councillors, to their feelings.
I would ask if uh, either of our Budget Oversight Committee members uh, feel that this is comprehensive enough, if there's anything that should be included, if we're going to create a policy or an ordinance. Does this do enough? Does this do too much? Should this?
Add anything?
Should we add anything? Yeah. Hi.
Um, I think um, Jim and I agree or recommend more of a policy versus an ordinance. And I think that it is a good idea, because it's a roadmap of where you came from and where you're going. So I think the three-year uh, term of look back uh, is, would be helpful.
And I can appreciate um, starting with a policy, then um, seeing how the council reacts to it. Let's see what the mechanics are of what that spreadsheet looks like. And how are we defining past years? Are we defining it as previous year? How valuable is that three years? I would recommend that uh, we start with a policy and then workshop it with members of the council. Workshop it with the department heads and the staff. Uh, get through a budget cycle, see how things are at the end of that cycle. Um, I mean, and we're talking like real granular stuff here. Is that spreadsheet even gonna be readable when we're doing three years of columns back and forth? Uh, how useful is that? We're, we've also had discussions uh, with this body around perhaps a new financial system. What's the chart and accounts gonna look like uh, when we move to that? So I would suggest uh, that Councilman Rego's uh, dead-on right, that we need to have a standardized presentation of data. We just probably wanna workshop that, uh, see what's right, come back as a budget committee with our staff uh, a little earlier on, uh, see what those charts look like, and let's all roll up our sleeves uh, to get where you need to be with the tools that are gonna be available to all of us uh, next year and the year after.
Yeah, I have no problem. I think a good, I think having a workshop with the council is probably a good idea uh, to show what we have, and I just wanna make sure that next year it's there. If it's a policy, what happens if it's a policy and it's not enforced? And that, can you enforce a policy? Can you say, hey, I'm not starting with a budget without these things being here? That's my only question.
Ignoring a town council policy would be grounds for termination. So I think we can enforce it. Yeah, all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you this. It's great, whatever you wanna do is fine. But a policy is weak. The reason you wanna have it in an ordinance is because it's enforceable. So the question is, is if you wanna start with a policy, that's fine. But I, I'm gonna tell you this. See, there's other towns where they do have ordinances like this, the financial controls, and they do have it in their charter. I'm ju, I'm just saying that. I can understand where you're coming from. You wanna have a policy. I don't, that's not, that's not a solicitor call. Uh, because it's a policy consideration. But I'm gonna tell you right now. You know, if you want, if you want this to have some teeth, gotta be an ordinance.
I, I mean, I remember last year at budget time, I remember John, you saying, hey, how much did we spend last year? And I stood up and I said, exactly what we have here, this is what we should have, and it never came to fruition, you know, so.
Yes.
I think I feel comfortable one of two ways, either holding it as a policy for a year to give it a trial run and kind of work out the bugs, if that makes sense, as the Budget Committee has recommended. Or looking at the language of the ordinances that Mr. DeSisto referenced in other communities, consulting with the Finance Director and Budget Committee before. So I wouldn't feel comfortable necessarily voting on this right now, would? Is this something that we could uh, take until next meeting?
So, so the route I'd like to go, go with is, let's do a workshop.
Okay.
Okay, and then from that workshop, let's pinpoint exactly, you know, you know, you may want to change this a little bit. It looks pretty good to me, but you may wanna change it a little bit, and, and then, you know, we'll, we'll nail it. And again, it's not about us. It's about, you know, next time around, you're gonna have three other people on here that have no experience. And I think, or, we're gonna have the same manager, but anyways, uh, so I, I think it's a good uh, a solid thing to have.
Starting off with a policy.
Yeah, let's.
I got an idea for a motion. Like, I might make, to make a motion that we refer this to the solicitor, the manager, the finance director, and the budget committee to come up with a policy that incorporates Mr. Rego's, Councilman Rego's request. And once we have that policy, then we can have the workshop with the council.
That's fine.
I'd like to second that motion.
That's fine. At least we're going in a direction.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. MB3, Discussion and Action Regarding the Highway Director Setting Up a Sweeping Schedule and Making Residents Aware of It. Again, Councilman Rego.
So, and I had a little chat with Brian, uh, this, was it this morning? Again, anyway.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, but, so all I'm looking for is him to, Brian to make uh, certain areas that are gonna get swept aware that it's gonna happen. Um, I know we have to give a 24-hour notice in order to um, for parking purposes, Reed, and I have a question along those lines. And it would be nice that uh, again, I'm gonna say advertise, but I don't want you to spend any money, but maybe in, in, in the uh, connect Warren, inform Warren, and you know, and, and when we're at, when we're advertising, maybe, you know, ask the people, whatever they can do to help out would be wonderful. I do have a question. Are you able to put together a schedule?
Yeah, so we can, we'll, we'll kind of workshop it this week for next week if we, it, everything's weather-dependent and personnel-dependent. So I don't wanna set stuff in stone that can't be accomplished, but I think putting out um, the plan saying, hey, this week, we, we might wanna do the north end. Um, you know, weather depend, to met, uh, dependent and personnel-dependent, but we do tend to put the no parking out for the streets to have sidewalks, because we gotta blow the sidewalks off. We don't put out no parking signs on every road in town, just because that would be a huge waste of paper. Um, but I, I can completely understand putting together a generalized list of streets we want to get to with the request of moving your vehicles.
The rest of the council people, people ask you, you know, when are they gonna sweep my street?
Yeah, well, I, I, you were talking about, 'cause every time when you do my street, you gotta get the signs stapled on the telephone poles, and don't park, no parking streets we will take place on this day.
Right, and we do that to any of the streets that have sidewalks, so that we can blow sidewalks off and take cars off the road, especially Water Street area. Anywhere downtown is usually the hardest. More of the south end or twisted, it's not as bad. Cars aren't on the side of the road as regular, so.
So, so Brian, question for you. When you put up those signs by ordinance, if, if you give somebody 48 hour, uh, uh, 48-hour notes that they're not supposed to park, I guess I should be addressing the solicitor that. And somebody's parked there. Are we giving tickets? Are we, we, are we towing them? And, and the problem I'm having, you do a great job sweeping. It costs the taxpayers money to do that, put up the signs, take down the signs, and all of a sudden, there's a car there, and when they move, you have all kind of trash and leaves. And to me, it's horrible. So do we have an ordinance? Does those?
So, the ordinance is the same as any other no parking standard that we put in, but we've never, we've never towed a vehicle or ticketed, I believe.
I can speak to that on, for Water Street, um, and I can hear it from my home. So they get out the, there's usually a detail, or, or an officer or a patrol person who comes along. And if there is a car parked who has not observed the no parking, they go out early and they, they beep their horn and we try to identify where the person is, and they try to get the person to move so that we're not ticketing and towing, which is a little bit, you know.
As, as much as I don't wanna see people get ticketed towing, but it, it's not fair for the taxpayer that's paying for that sweeper to go around, putting up the signs. And all of a sudden, that car leaves, and taxpayers stuck with that.
Oh, believe me, as a taxpayer and a small business owner who's had that happen, I, I am right along with you.
So if we could just do a little better job with that, that would be great. And then the other part, and I know you always start with the other ends of towns. Uh, but is there a way that we could do a little bit more on the north end in the Water Street area? Only because that is where most of our people for restaurants income, and it's really a direct reflection of the town. I know it's hard, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we try to do it systematically. I mean, Water Street particularly is tough, and given this year's constraints with our budget, it's gonna be tougher. We tend to do Water Street overnight, um, when the least amount of interruption to businesses. So we're gonna have to get creative this year with it, because we can't afford to do it overnight.
Monday is always, uh, there are.
The slower, the slower days, correct.
Monday.
And, and again, because we have so many people that come to town, that's a direct reflection on all of us. So if it's clean, it's a positive reflection. If it's not, so that's where I'm coming from with that, so.
It's just the section of town that does require the most.
Yeah, so.
Work with the whole personnel and.
All I'm asking is for you to do your best.
Posting, but yep, we'll, we'll work on something.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Thank you. Alrighty, um, town manager. Discussion and action and, or discussion. Discussion and action and, or discussion and update on the IRS penalty.
Um, thank you, Madam Vice President. So um, for the two new council members, I'm not sure if you're aware of this. But back in October of twenty-four, we received notice from the Internal Revenue Service that the town. Um, had obtained a penalty for late submission of ten ninety-nines from twenty twenty-two. Um, so almost two years. Uh, we had to have them submitted by the end of January. And uh somehow they were not submitted until sometime in February. Um, the IRS noticed this and then decided that they were gonna penalize the town um in the amount of eighty-one hundred dollars. Um, back in October, we appealed that. Um, and we got, just got notified in March, March thirteenth, that our appeal was denied. Um, but there was a, there's a second appeal that you can do, which I have done. Um, there's also, we've also reached out to what is called the taxpayer advocacy advocate. I have a problem with that. Um, Advocate Center and uh Services, which is also a part of the IRS. Um, at first I thought maybe, we hadn't heard anything from them. At first, maybe I thought that um. Uh, those positions had been eliminated, but I did hear from them today. And they still have our case active, they still are working on our behalf to try to uh abate this penalty. So as, as far as today goes, we have not received a notice saying we have to pay this by a certain due date. We still have an appeal in process and we still have this uh, the service um, working on our behalf to try to abate this penalty. So I just wanted to keep you notified of that.
There's no um uh interest or anything that's growing on this.
Uh, the interest will not start until we get the notice of the penalty, formal notice of the penalty. So. After the appeal process is done, we'll get a notice that you have to pay this by a certain date. If you don't pay it by that date, then the penalty, the interest will start to accrue.
Alright. And next, we have discussion and action regarding the auditing service bid, or lack thereof.
Uh, yeah, so we, we did go out to bid for auditing services and um that closed last week and we did not receive any bids. Um, in the meantime, I did find out that, um, which I wasn't aware of, that, is that before we go out to bid, we have to submit our RFQ. To the auditor general to have them review it and make sure that the pertinent information is in there. Um, which we have done. Uh, they have looked at it, they gave it back, they sent it back today. Um, this morning, uh, with some changes, we have to make those changes, send it back to them and they will approve our RFQ. Uh, once they do that, then we'll be allowed to go out to bid again on that and um, that's what we plan on.
Is this more like a sole source? Is there a lot of companies that do it, or is there really like, just like one?
Uh, so right now, um, I'm informed that there are about sixteen companies that, uh, sixteen, I'm sorry, six companies in the state. Sixteen, we'd be better off, but uh, six companies in the state that are doing it. Uh, we're not the only ones that are struggling for um auditing services. Um, and so the, the auditor general also did say that they will have a list that we can refer. To our uh RFQ, once um we're allowed to send it up, so.
Do you think that the reason we didn't get any respondents to the RFP was because we hadn't gone through the process? Is there something they were looking?
No, I, 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 I'm not sure why we didn't get any uh bids on the first one, but um, it's, it's possible that. Uh, with two of the companies that are involved in the, the auditing services, uh, it was one that we currently use and we used for three years, so. Um, I, I don't believe she's gonna bid again, uh, or is allowed to bid again. And then. Uh, the other one is a company that we're using to uh assist in the finance office, so uh they are, they're basically uh conflict of interest, yeah.
Alright, and.
Carrie. Uh, question. So it went out to bid. Can we solicit now or do we have to put it out to bid again, is my question?
Okay, the recommendation from the auditor general is, is to re, rebid it out with the approved RFQ. If no um bid to return at that time, then you can go to the solicitation.
Okay, what did RF?
Request for.
Okay, the RFP, RF.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
But they also said we could mail it directly to the list they're gonna give us, correct?
I can't, yes.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Good.
All set?
Yes.
Okay, finally, update regarding the school building committee.
Um, yes, uh, Madam Vice President, I just wanted to keep the council advised. Last Thursday, there was a building committee meeting. Um, and, and prior meetings, it was discussion about design and, and those types of things. Uh, moving forward, i- the construction phase is going to start. Um, so uh, the Rhode Island Department of Education has uh. Sixty percent approval of the construction documents, so uh, that means that, that they can go forward with the other um. Um, processes to get a hundred percent of the documents done to go out to bid. So that, that, that's the process that you're going forward with those. Um, there were five contractors that were, have met the request for qualification. They put a response out of a request for qualifications and they, five contractors responded. Um, I understand that uh the owner's management group has um worked with uh most of these companies. They are familiar with these companies. Um, April fourteenth is a pre-bid site visit for. The um, construction, the areas that will be affected by the construction, the high school and the uh, uh, middle school. And May fifth bids are due and will be open on May fifth, so.
So I got a question on this because. It's not gonna go out to bond until we get our audits, both Warren and Bristol. Are they being a little premature? I'm, I'm, I'm going out for bid and all that prior to us know that we get into funding?
Um.
Am I losing you?
I think the bonds were already approved.
Yeah, and, and, and signed.
They just haven't drawn the money on them yet.
Sheila, maybe you can help me out on this. Am I wrong in thinking this?
They extended the um. They extended the date on a bond that's maturing until June. In anticipation of the audits for both towns being completed. Once they are completed, then bond, bond council will give a rating to the bond. And they'll be able to refinance anything that's outstanding with the additional monies.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That answers my question.
What are the odds we, our audit's gonna be done by June?
Should be done.
Yeah? I thought we don't even have an audit yet.
I like the confidence.
Okay.
Alright, any, you're good?
No, that, that's it, but I do want to let you know that I, I plan on, on uh keeping you informed as, as construction goes. I mean. Before it was, it was uh, uh, design and, and things like that, color and those choices. Uh, but once, I think it's important the council knows what's going on, once construction.
Now that they're gonna start spending the money.
Correct. Well, they have been spending money already.
Right, yeah, but the big money.
Yeah.
Alrighty, uh, Solicitor, we have a request motion for executive session, closed session pursuant to R I G L forty-two. Dash forty-six dash five subsection A two collective bargaining USW. We do a roll call here.
I would make a motion for executive session regarding the USW collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Councilman Tremblay.
Yeah.
Councilman Hanley.
Aye.
Councilman Rego.
Aye.
And I, Council Vice President Cronin, vote aye. On to Finance Director, Revenues and Expenditures, and what do you have for us, Mister? Finance.
I don't have much to add other than what was in my uh monthly report. This one, March was a very ordinary month. March is normally a very low collection month. And this one was the same. Um, taxes are due first of May. Uh, things are picking up now. Uh, we'll, a lot more visits to the office and um. We estimate we'll take in three and a half to three point seven five million in April and another couple of million in May. Um, there are no particularly unusual things in the uh revenue expense report. I, I, you would note that. We did move the sewer fee out of the tax collections and put it where it belongs. So you can get a better picture of where, where we are with the sewer um folks, and we'll do that on a more regular basis than we've done. Um, I received no reports this month from the department heads on any overages, but we expect some next month. You all have a cash balance report, you'll note that we have now uh on a monthly basis. If you have any suggestions for formatting or sorting the things, let me know.
Dave, I'm gonna commend you on it, and, and again, this is something we'll talk about when we do our budget meeting, but it's nice to have it on a month-to-date to see where we're at, if you mind. And I just have one question. When you say, when you said that the bills would do May first, you looked straight in my eyes, I'll get the money to you, Dave.
Okay, good.
Councilman.
That's all I have tonight.
Um, just a quick question. If I recall from the last um regular meeting of the town council, the um revenues that were coming in were a bit under. What was a average?
Right.
Is that, is it still, for the calendar year, still a bit uh below average?
No, no, we're, we're pretty well where we ought to be.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's funny, I, I've looked at the last three years and they're so uh.
There's not really consistency.
Very, they're very consistent.
Oh, they are very consistent, yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And uh, who will be giving Mister Manager of the Tax Assessor's report?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Vice President. So uh, the abatement uh to the two thousand nineteen tax roll in the amount of. Uh, four hundred and one dollars and forty-nine cents was uh involves a car tax and it involved an active military duty person.
Brian, did you say four hundred or one hundred?
He did say four, but he meant.
Four, I'm sorry, did I, I, four hundred and one dollars and forty-nine cents.
One hundred and four dollars, yeah.
Says one oh four forty-nine on our.
The one that's in the packet, but the one on the agenda says four oh one.
Yeah, so.
Just wanna make sure which one's right.
Is it one oh four or a four oh one?
One oh four is the correct number.
Thank you.
So you want individual uh motions on this?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the one oh four forty-nine?
Second.
We have motion to approve the abatement of one oh four forty-nine. Call in favor.
Aye.
And number two?
Uh, number two is a, a abatement of the two thousand and twenty-four tax roll, the amount of fifty-four dollars and three cents. Um, this is uh, regards a tangible, tangible property that uh was not. Uh, given the fifty thousand dollar exemption, it was not applied, so therefore um. There was a question about it.
Make a motion to approve the fifty-four oh three.
Second.
Two thousand twenty-four tax roll abatement.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah. And next, we have the Recreation Director before us. Uh, discussion and action regarding twenty twenty-five Warren Summer Concert Series.
So this is the uh lineup that we have for this coming year, all to be paid for through donations and the grant. And um, so before the uh president had, had his injury. I had put down uh his name in contract, so I'm gonna have to change that, I would guess, or.
I am authorized.
Really my question, do, yeah, so.
I can sign.
So changing all of the contracts to the vice chair's.
I, I leave it as it is, and then just sign the notation is that as, as Vice President.
Okay.
Okay, that, yeah, that was my only question, because I had created those um earlier. Um, so yes, so this is the lineup that we have. And um, what is coming.
Uh, a motion to approve the lineup or to.
I think it's the contracts.
It's the, the lineup and contract, these contracts, they haven't changed from last.
They have not, they haven't changed in years. It's, it's the original that you had.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve the lineup in the contracts as presented by the uh rector.
I love a good contract, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next we have discussion and action regarding a request for a beer garden for the twenty twenty-five summer concert series.
So it was requested um that we look into offering a beer garden at the concert series. Similar to what we have done at, well, not the town has done, but other organizations have done at the Co-op Festival or the Swift Event. Or the Family Fun Day. Um, and so before I kind of really went into. The process, I wanted to know what the council's purview was and how they felt about offering or selling alcohol at the concert series. Um, the vendor would be responsible, because one of the questions at the meeting was who would be responsible? And the vendor would be responsible for the insurance, paying the detail officer and securing the, the um liquor license.
And what about the tips, the tips are.
Uh, they would have to be, that would be required, that's required.
Anthony, this would also, after we, this is basically just given the go-ahead, they would still need like some type of a liquor license further down the road, correct?
What we're looking at here is a class F, a licensed class F or a class F one, depending what's gonna be served. Okay, and I get uh Sandy correctly, if I'm rolling a maximum of what, twelve? A year, so they would come in and they would ask, I guess you would be having eight concerts?
Yes.
They would ask for class F one licenses for each of the concert dates. They would ask for it. The insurance they would be required to get, they would have to have this one uh serving coming in.
Anthony, you said twelve a year, so is that for the applicant? In other words, we can only give out twelve a year or a person can only get twelve a year?
Yeah, but what um, the purpose is three dash seven dash fourteen. And uh, what, what that does, I'm sorry, a dash eleven. But what that does, what that uh statute doesn't, so you can get an F one license, what they don't want is people circumvent. Getting the B V for the B V. Get an F one, I'll get an F one, I'll get an F one.
My concern was if we give eight for this, then we only have four left for any other event.
Well, you know.
Okay.
You know, what happens, a lot of times like uh churches, that's what, run, run a lot of stuff, they don't want it to actually be operating.
Right, yeah. So, so my, my question to you is, being familiar with this, is it feasible? Because, you know, I think you have to have a police detail there, right? You gotta pay in four hours. Have you done all the math for this? I mean, I don't have a problem.
If the vendor wants to.
So yeah, the, it, it is the vendors, uh, if the vendor feels that it is something that they want to.
Yeah.
Do, it wouldn't be something that I organized, but we're going to give that option to a vendor to see if that is something that's feasible for them.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I don't have a problem, but it may not make.
I don't have an issue with it. All the, I mean, the Family Fun Day, all the ones they do, they have a beer garden.
And we would, again, isolate an area, it would be broken off.
And it'd only be three hours at the shop.
Yeah, it would only be during the, the concert hours.
If I may, this is something that happens in all the communities, and the vendors typically come in. There are costs involved, and I think they, they do it more as an um opportunity to get their name out.
Right.
Advertising.
And it, and it's supposed to be a money-making venture.
Like a, a, a local brewery or something.
Right, that's, that's what we're looking at.
They get their product out to the.
Yep.
To the public.
I think I support it in concept and we'll certainly have the opportunity as a council to review when they come before us for specifics, make sure that they are a responsible vendor, so. I uh also echo my sport for this.
It says action, do we need to take action or to say that we're in favor or just, no?
What, what's happened is, is in the discussion, I think uh what Carol was looking for was how do you go forward on it? Now she knows she can push that uh forward.
Sounds good.
Alright, we're set with uh two, so number three is request permission to overspend in rec supervisor salary. Account oh one, five six oh, one two, one oh two oh, for one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars to be offset. By parking assistant salary and beach manager account oh one, five six oh, one two, one oh three oh. And oh one, five six oh, one two, ten thirty-one.
Yes, so this is uh just to cover the remaining FY twenty-five year for our summer employees. Um, we had significantly cut the summer counselors' salaries last year. And this is just to get us through the rest of this year.
So that'll get us to July one, that's what this is for, okay? I'm making a motion, we uh approve the over expenditure from the rec supervisor salary. Could be supplemented by the parking assistant salary and the beach manager account.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, just have a question. You have reasoning for over expenditure, finished out twenty-five, original budget cuts were not enough. Do you think they should have been more? Like, maybe.
The cuts more or the?
Well, the, the way you worded it here, you said, maybe.
Cuts were now, okay.
I, I think.
I forgot my comma. I forgot my comma.
It's a unique situation because it falls right in between the fiscal years, between uh, this one and next one. And so that's why always this time of year, we get this uh, sort of shift.
Well, this is the first time I've asked for uh, the supervisor's salary to be uh, we, that we fell short. Um, unfortunately, so hopefully this year.
Typically the lifeguards, right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
So the lifeguards are the next one? Oh, you have, sorry, you have to vote on that.
No, we, we voted.
Well, we did. Um, all, I don't think we did. We, John made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And number four, request permission to overspend in lifeguard salary. Account oh one, five six oh, one two, one oh two five, for one hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-five cents to be offset by beach manager salary. Account oh one, five six oh, one two, ten thirty-one.
Motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So this is basically the same.
Yeah.
Circumstance.
And finally, discussion, action and approval of the well vendor, well works for Warren Community Garden.
So this uh, if you remember, we did not receive any bids when we had put this out for an RFP. And so I sought two vendors. One was a uh, drilling, one was a pounding and um, they both were relatively the same amount of money, but uh, after speaking with people who know more about wells than I do, um, going with the drill company, which is well works, is probably going to be less expensive. Um, and uh, a better, uh, better situation.
Carol, I just have a quick question. And I was gonna call you on this. Where are the funds coming from?
This is coming from the D E M grant.
Okay.
And this, the grant covers this total amount?
Yes.
I will make a motion. We approve the uh, vendor for the well as presented by the rector and the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Second.
Now, can, 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 would you amend that to say up to? It seems like if you can get a, a lower price, he's already pretty much given eighteen thousand nine thirty-one. If, if the motion says up to.
I, I'll change that to up to, but if you look, the well debt, that's contingent.
Yeah, so there is, there is contingency. I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, cause it's so much per foot. So if they don't, so I'll say, alright, I'll change that to up to eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I started signing these. I, they all say back in the day, so they need to be amended to having the different band names.
Oh, did?
Yeah.
Okay, no, no worries.
It could probably just be crossed out. I, I.
I made copies of the.
The same one. I stopped signing just cause I figured it, I don't know if you can like initial it and change the name.
I'll make, I'll clean it up. I'll clean it up and I'll, I'll bring it back. Alright.
I will make a motion. We retire it to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks everyone.
I'll make a motion to close executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
And seal the minutes.
Come out of it and seal the minutes.
And seal the minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion that the manager and the solicitor and the director of DPW proceed as discussed in executive session and report back to the council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.